Hi, everyone. We're waiting on Council President.
Councilmember Kinnear, it looks like we're good to go. And we are good in chambers.
I'm there. Great, thank you. So I'm going to be sharing the meeting today in Councilmember Mom's absence, Councilmember Pro Tem Mom's absence. And I'd like to welcome you all to our study session today. And I would like to especially welcome former Council President Ben Stuckert, our CHHS Board, Community Health and Human Services Board, both past and present, and the Continuum of Care members. So welcome, everybody. Wanted to set the stage a little bit for you. That is that this is going to be a discussion about where we've come, where we've been, where we want to be, and the ways to get there. We're relying on people who are experts in the field. Certainly, Arlene Patton, who has been associated with HUD for many, many years. And Council President is working as the Executive Director for SLIC right now. And I want to give you a little bit of background on how we got here. We were approached by the CHHS Board, both Councilmember Stratton and I, to meet, to discuss some issues and what they saw as concerns. And we decided the best thing we should do, and could do, is have a discussion, a community discussion with Continuum of Care, with the rest of the council members, and certainly with the administration for CHHS. So we're here today, as I said, it's a discussion. Want to make sure that we keep it civil, and we're looking for answers to move us forward. And I wanted to start with Councilmember Stratton, because she's going to need to leave before the meeting's over. So Councilmember Stratton, I know you had some questions. Do you want to go ahead and start with the questions you have?
Yeah, first, I want to thank all of you for joining us today. This has been a rocky road the last few months, and I appreciate everybody's patience with us, because we don't always have the answers. I especially want to thank Arlene Patton, who I met during my first term, when I was on the CHHS Board. And at first, she scared me just a little bit. And when I realized the amount of knowledge that this woman had, and her ever-ending or never-ending compassion and passion to get money and financial assistance out to groups that really need it, I understood why she was so serious and so focused. So, Arlene, thank you, because it's been a few years now since I've been around the block, and I've learned so much from you, and I'm so grateful that you're able to be here today. I know that this is being set up so we can hear about your concerns and what council can do to help. But I guess the only thing that I want to say that I hope will be part of the discussion is what keeps me awake at night is when I get emails. This great email about the community was selected for HUD, youth homelessness program money. And the amount of funding is quite large, and it will support housing programs, rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing. And I have to be really honest that my first question was, how are, how is this going to be? What is the process for this? And how is our CHHS department going to manage this funding? And what's the plan for getting these dollars out? So that's been the big concern for me, knowing that I don't think council quite knows what a process, what process is in place, and how we're going to manage some of these fundings. And I know I've heard from a lot of you that there's a lot of fear with the community in homelessness and housing, and we need to move forward. We've got to get the money out there using a department that isn't quite 100% at this point. So those are my concerns, and if those could be weaved in, I'm sure they'll be part of the conversation. I would appreciate it. I'll stay online till I absolutely have to leave, because I'm interested in hearing from you. And I'll turn it back to Lori.
So Karen, Councilmember Stratton, is there a question in there somewhere? Did you want to direct your question to a particular person or entity?
No, that was just my big concern and the question for the group, or the question even for Kirsten, is what are the discussions about, you know, those grants coming in? And what is the plan and the process for getting the funding out into the community? And does she have the staff to manage that? And what can council do to help? We want to be a resource, and I just don't know where we fit into this. So maybe that's my question.
Okay. So before we hear from Kirsten, I'd like to hear from the Board Chair. I'm looking for you. Adrian, if you're there, do you want to offer some? There you are. I see you. Do you want to offer some insight into this? And then maybe we can turn to Arlene. And I'd like to hear from the Board first, before we go to staff. So would you mind?
Not at all. Thank you for having this opportunity to bring us all together. I think this really comes out of, first of all, nothing but respect for the CHHS Department and all that they've done and all that they've managed to continue to do in spite of the turnover and the vacancies and those sorts of things. And I would say we've, on the Board, at least the executive team, has been long concerned about the turnover, particularly in the director's spot. And pretty consistent reports of, you know, great work, but being done by filling, people filling in, who it's not necessarily their position to do so. And so this has been an ongoing concern, and it really reached a head last spring with so many people stepping away. And our concerns, so we have a couple of concerns. One is just simply that turnover and that loss of institutional wisdom and connection to what each of the Boards do and what their relationship is with the administration and the city council. And, you know, as an example, it was interesting today to read in the paper about the decision on the Resource Center, on the Invision Center, in that the CHHS Board was very much involved in the launching of that center, and we had no idea this vote was even coming through. So it doesn't mean that we wouldn't necessarily agree or disagree, because we didn't have the conversation. But I think it speaks to the ways in which these gaps impart in the Department, just the staffing of the Department, and then a sort of lack of communication between all of the different groups here. So council administration, COC, and CHHS, such that it wasn't thought to be brought to our attention that this was coming up, right? So, and I think what we're concerned about is really starting this summer. It felt like there were things that were starting to fall through cracks, and we have concern about whether those have longer-term implications. And also recognizing, as stretched as the staff is, we're in the middle of a housing crisis, and what? We just discovered rental prices went up 32%. This is not going to get better. And so the Band-Aid effect that staff has done, which has been amazing work, is it's not going to be able to be responsive to these issues. And we're particularly concerned about that, concerned about shifts in our funding cycles because of a lack of staff, as opposed to there was a strategic reason to make a shift. Yet not to say that I don't understand why we didn't, for example, do our home funds this fall. I understand the reasoning, but the reason wasn't a strategic looking-forward reason. It was a response to some shortages and some gaps, and these unfilled positions. And so just concerns about how we work together going forward to be able to be more proactive and to better understand the different roles of the Boards, the Council, the relationship with the administration.
Okay, good information. Arlene, do you want to respond, perhaps add to this?
Well, I think Adrian did a great job. The only thing I would add to that is one of my biggest concerns, and this is because of my 20-some years with HUD, is the Senate is looking for every pot of money that isn't being used to recapture while they then want to fund other activities. And in the past, CDBG was always on the chopping block to not be funded, and yet it's such a critical source for the community. And then HOME, which is for affordable housing for all populations, needs to be out there, because it helps to match and fill in the gaps. When we're talking about state funding and housing trust funds, they won't fund unless there's a local match. And HOME and CDBG was always those local matches. So how are we going to overcome that if we are not issuing an RFP in response to the state's timeframe for issuing their RFPs for affordable housing for the low-income population? Not the homeless, per se, but the low-income, which needs housing as well as everybody else concerned. I, too, was concerned when I read this morning's paper on the Resource Center. But I'm more concerned with the rent increases that are really impacting, and I hate the term, but I will use it, the working poor that just barely squeaked by right now. And all these increases in rents, because they can do it, doesn't mean that they are going to be able to meet, the population is going to be able to meet that increase and still have food on the table and taking care of their children. So I think we've got a huge problem by not issuing an RFP and standing out there with our match funds that are available to us.
Council, former Council President Stuckert, do you want to add to that conversation for us? And then I'm going to go to our other council members.
Yeah, hi, everybody. I'm the Chair of the Continuum of Care Board, Ben Stuckert. To reiterate, I think the Home Dollars this year was a huge blow, that RFP not going out. And I guess I'll just start by saying staff is. Kirsten, Becky, and Debbie that we work with on the COC are doing everything in their power. And it's crushing to see the lack of staff there and how hard everybody is working and how much pressure it puts on them. But I think, like, to just reiterate a couple of other things that we haven't even talked about, the community worked really hard in 2020 with the council, and the council acted and passed the first source of local low-income housing dollars with $1,590. And in 2019, the legislature gave a rebate back in $1,406. And so that's another pot of, just by this year alone, that's another $4 million plus, upwards of $5 million that's available. But there isn't the staffing to get those dollars out in the community. And then you put on top of that the Home Dollar RFP being delayed. And then, I'm not sure if everybody on this call is aware, I have had two meetings with the county. The federal government released ARP home dollars. The county is getting $3 million, and the city has the opportunity to get $4 million. And along with that, they release, when you sign the paperwork, comes an automatic 5%. The planning dollars are released, so the city would get $200,000 for planning dollars. But if you don't have the staff or plan in place, you don't have the infrastructure to even apply for those dollars. And so, and it's not just like housing in isolation. We turned back money to the HUD last year, because we couldn't do rapid rehousing. And that's not even, that market rate rental is not available for rapid rehousing in our home system, which goes to shortages in the Planning Department and a lack of a Planning Director for the last three years, and staff not moving other housing policies forward. So it's not just one isolated department that is feeling the pressure, and that pressure goes out to the community. And when you have a housing crisis compiled on top of homelessness getting worse, those dollars become even more and more important. And then you pile on top of that a $2.5 million grant for the youth homeless system, which has actually made a six-month reduction. But you've lost Matt Davis, and now Cecily is moving on. And how do we replace that knowledge in the system? And so I guess from a Continuum of Care perspective, I'm just wondering, and I'm worried about all of those things impacting our community. But I guess what I'm looking for is what is the staffing plan? Is there an ability to hire project employees to close the gap so that we're not missing $4 million opportunities, which would be hundreds and hundreds of units that can fill gap financing? Are we looking at fast-tracking certain positions and making them exempt or non-exempt so we can get around and speed up civil service? Or what's the process with HR and civil service to get the list moving forward? I just haven't seen a plan, and I'm worried that we're going to burn out even more employees of the CHHS Department and the Planning Department, and we're going to find ourselves in a 20-year hole.
Okay, thanks. That's good. I would like to hear from Councilmember Cathcart, and then Council President Beggs. And then we'll go to anybody else who has a concern or possible solution. Go ahead, Councilmember Cathcart.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't raising my hand, sorry.
I was hoping that you had a comment or would contribute to the conversation.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, what the former council president just laid out is probably spot-on. I mean, the deficits in planning staff and in the CHHS staff, you know, are really kind of putting us in a bind and behind. And the dollars that Ben just talked about, the potential $4 million that we could get, that really hasn't even been brought to our attention as an opportunity. And, you know, we should be taking advantage of any of these available dollars that we can. And so we've got to figure out a way to either contract out, find a consultant that we can work with to contract out, to do this work, to just get going. And that's probably the quickest route. Or we need to figure out some other mechanism to hire quicker. And, you know, I've talked about needing to look at civil service and how we can reform that to make things move faster. But whatever the answer is, or whatever the near-term solution that we can agree on is, we just, we've got to move, and we've got to get the right staffing or consultants on board so that we can take advantage of these opportunities. But also, you know, addressing the larger housing issues and things like that, you know, those things cannot slow down or anything else. We've got to keep progress and momentum on that side. And so, you know, we just have to make sure that we're doing everything we can to keep us on the right path. So that's what I have for now, but I might chime in a little bit later.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Council President?
Yeah, I just, about a week ago, got the latest from civil service on how many vacant positions there are in the city. And it's over 200 currently. And that's across all departments. But obviously, front and center is CHHS and planning. And I'm not sure what the plan is. I'm not sure what the options are for consultants or project employees. But I agree with everything that's been said, is that that seems like that should be the highest priority right now, in terms of filling positions at the city. After the first of the year, fire and police have plans for academies, but they're not going to do it till after the first of the year. So now is to do that. I just learned about the extra $4 million in ARP home dollars yesterday from Ben, and that just seems like something we should be really pursuing. We find ourselves, we're in the middle of budget process, and the general fund is always a squeeze at this type of year, several million dollars in the red-looking in the 2022. And the way that we're going to fix that is find other sources for critical spending that otherwise is going to be general funds. So those home funds are a great idea. They could simply be RFPed out. We've got a list already. We've gotten from SLIC and the COC of dozens and dozens of affordable housing projects that just need gap funding to get across the finish line. So we could do an RFP for that, using that money. With, again, it'll take some staffing. And again, I also want to add on kudos to the existing staff who've hung in there with us, and commend them for doing so. And hopefully, we'll be getting you help soon. I did want to mention, we did get a report on our money on 1,406. We have a little over $500,000 ready on that. And then $1,590, the sales tax started getting collected in July. We haven't really gotten it yet, other than a few thousand dollars, because it lags by a couple of months. But by the end of the year, we should probably have some real money. And again, that proposal that Ben Stuckert made previous to us, which is just do an RFP for projects that need to be gap-filled initially, while we work out the longer-term criteria for $1,590. I support that. We should just figure out how to get those dollars out the door while we come up with the longer term. Our Housing Action Subcommittee, which some of you on this call are participating in, is working on the longer-term criteria for $1,590. But given the crisis, I'm a supporter of just whatever money we have by the end of the year, doing an RFP and getting those dollars out the door for gap-filling projects, so that we can actually just get them built. I also, if you read the paper, was a little distressed that we didn't do the very nominal amount of money for the Invision Center, because that's an important, an important infrastructure that serves people at risk of being in the criminal justice system and people at risk of housing, even if they actually have housing. So I hope that we'll revisit that and figure out what the considerations are and concerns, and maybe we'll fix those and get that funded so that we don't lose that long-term project that's been going on, that. So anyway, those are my comments so far. Thanks.
Thank you. I'd love to open it up to the group, and then we can hear from staff after that. And I know CO's you, Edie, I know you, Dawn. So if you could just chime in, and if we could hear from you, if you have any concerns that are different from what has been previously stated or possible solutions going forward, it'd be really helpful.
Well, I'm, so this is Edie Riceauer. I'm currently Chair of the SLIC Board, so I'm pretty knowledgeable about the good work that Ben has done for us and for the community. So all those $1,590, the Home Dollars, I kept suggesting that the county writes RFPs for Home Dollars all, every year. Maybe we contract with them to get this RFP out the door for home money. I know it has some complexities, but it seems like there's some resources out there in the community who might be able to help if we reach out to them. You know, I guess I would, the one thing I would add would be, just in terms of housing issues, that I'm, access to mental health services and substance abuse services, there's just, we continue to see increases in people who need those services, and they're just almost inaccessible for us. So if we can focus on that area at all, that's something that I think would be really valuable in the long term.
Who else would like to?
Hey, Lori. This is Karen.
Go ahead.
I have a quick question, and I don't know if anybody can answer it. But I have heard a few times inside City Hall that staff has been told that they will not be generating any RFPs. Is that, is that true, or is that just something that's going around? That they're not to, they're not to generate any RFPs at all? Do we have an answer to that?
We can ask that at the end. That's a good question. Let's ask that.
I'll make a note. Because I've heard it a few times. I think other council members have, too. And I would just like to know if that's, what's behind that, if it is indeed true.
Ms. Kinder, did you want to chime in?
Sure. And I apologize, I'm home with a sick kiddo. So if you get background noise, that's the situation. But I, you know, I think as a former CHHS staff member, and certainly now in the nonprofit setting, trying to perform work in the community, it's just very concerning to see the turnover and the lack of staff that nonprofits have to engage with. I know that when I was at the city, I was in pretty frequent communication with the nonprofit agencies and with the providers and with the COC Board. And we're just not, we're not getting any information. And so it's hard to know kind of what our, what our needs are in terms of how do we adjust? How do we partner with the city? How do we access the resources? I'm glad that Ben brought up the ARA Home Funds. Those have a lot of regulations that have been waived in an effort to get them out into the community quickly, including things like match requirements. And so I would certainly be disappointed if we didn't take an opportunity at the city and county level to access those funds and get them out into the community, given the housing crisis that we're facing right now. So it's, you know, I know the staff is short and that they're working very hard, but to lose those resources in the community has a very direct impact on the, on the clients we're serving and just the downtown core. I'm sure there's been a lot of discussion amongst the business group, too, lately. And so I, there's always a correlation between our system and their system. And, you know, holding up our ability to do work is certainly going to create other challenges for City Hall and for the broader region. So I, I think we're all a little frustrated that it has been held back and that we're not able to get information more quickly out of, out of the Department, knowing that there's, you know, not a whole lot of folks left. But I think any way that the city can, can help us understand what we need to do as providers to better understand what their timelines are, and what their expectations are, and what their hopes are for the next funding cycle would be very helpful. And also kind of what we can expect in terms of support. I know we've had some challenges in the past couple of months on various contract issues, but also just on system-wide issues around our PSH properties and safety concerns in various downtown neighborhoods. And it's been hard to get, you know, engagement on that as well from the city. And so I think just some, if they could help us understand what, what our expectations should be for the next couple of months, whether they get hired up, that would certainly help alleviate some of our frustration and provide some transparency to what's, what's going on and what we can expect.
Thank you. And Pam, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Pam Parr, Executive Director of the Spokane Housing Authority. I've also been on the COC Board forever. I guess, and one of the, one of the things that I would, I would want you to think about as you're thinking about staffing, and I know civil service has done the discussion about how we can make that quicker. But, and Dawn, you can, Dawn and Edie, chime in here. You know, we're all trying to hire staff, too. And we're having a really difficult time finding good qualified staff. And one of the things that, that we know that we're going to have to do with the Housing Authority is increase wages. In order to compete and hire qualified staff, we're going to have to pay more. And I would like the city to think about that, because if you really want to get good talent, you're going to have to pay more than what you're paying.
Yeah, Catholic Charities has done a whole new salary scale, because we're having the exact same problem. So, and I apologize, I didn't introduce myself. I'm John Kinder. I'm a Vice President at Catholic Charities, used to be at the city. But we're completely adjusting our pay scales and other ways that we can incentivize employment, because we've got, I think, over 60 vacancies just at Catholic Charities that we're having an incredibly hard time filling. We're offering sign-on bonuses and all kinds of things to try and get creative. So I, I know hiring is a problem, but I, we're all in that same boat. And so the work's got to keep moving.
We're doing the same. We'll be doing the same. We're going to increase our salary scales.
Anybody else? Karen, I know you have to leave soon.
I just wanted to say, I, people have been sending me little notes. And one of the questions is, and I looked at the participant list, is anybody from the mayor's office, or the city administrator, or human resources at this meeting?
We have, we have, excuse me, Marlene Feist is here, and we have Kirsten here as well. And Marlene will be able to answer questions at the end.
Okay. So that would be another question that I've had a couple people ask me, is where is the mayor and the city administrator in this meeting? So that's last.
And I see Johnny Perkins is here, and we can tap him at the end as well.
Perfect. And Marlene, thank you. Perfect. And Marlene, thank you for being here, Marlene. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Stratton Kinnear, I have been on the call from the beginning and taking notes. So I have been present and attentive since 11:00 AM. Thank you.
All right. I will respond with that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the group that would like to either offer suggestions, voice concerns that we haven't heard prior to now? Because I'd love to hear from you. This is your, your chance. You have our undivided attention. Arlene, please go ahead.
A few years back, we developed a joint RFP with Home and CDBG, which the board felt was very successful. Is that under consideration?
Okay, that'll be a question for staff and/or administration. Ben's shaking his head no. Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have, I'd like to speak up. So I'm Michelle Harris, and I'm the Chief Mission and Workforce Advancement Officer at Goodwill Industries of the Inland Northwest. And we have been a partner with the city for many years and a past recipient of general funds and also a current head provider. And so that program is really important to our community. And so one thing that's really on the top of our minds is making sure that we continue this partnership so that we can continue serving the community and helping those most vulnerable with disabilities with their housing. It's a really important program. And sometimes when the city doesn't have enough staff, it does take longer for, like, funds to be reimbursed or questions to be answered. And that does affect our ability to provide services sometimes. I would just also echo that the current staff that are there, you know, Debbie and Becky and the IT teams, they've really been stepping up and helpful to us and trying their best to answer the questions. I know before things were short-staffed, they were already all overworked, all the staff. And so I can't even imagine now how they're even keeping up with the work that they have to do. And so Goodwill's committed to continue to serve our community. We still want to be, you know, a partner the best we can in anything that we can do to help. But just any way that some of the positions can be filled so that the providers that are providing the services have the support they need to do a good job and make sure, a lot of the nonprofits, you know, we do carry a lot of funds when we don't get reimbursed. We went recently three months without being reimbursed because it took some time for the contract. And some, some organizations can't, can't, they don't have the funds and resources to do that. So we were really fortunate that we could do that. But having that support from the city really keeps our current funding and the work that we're doing. And then also any times there's opportunities for more services in our community, we definitely want to, as providers, be able to step up and help. And so having those RFPs available for us to participate in is really important. So those are just some of the comments that I have. And anything that Goodwill can do to be helpful, we want to be there to be a partner.
Thank you. Anybody else before I start chiming in? Okay, great. Oh.
Lori.
Go ahead.
I guess the only thing I would add is the lack of coordination has scoundred me. And I've been on the Board now for five-plus years. I've only got four more months to go, 400 and, you know, whatever. But the lack of coordination. How many housing committees do we name? How many, they came up with a great plan to do a plan for the, for the planning department. The, I'm concerned when you talk about, well, we'll just do RFPs. Who's going to oversee those RFPs? And what's the accountability? We have a great RFP committee that oversees it. We have no, we make sure there's no conflict of interest. That's a stumbling block at times. But that's my concern is, I want to see us come together as a community, the COC, the City Council, the staff, the Board. How do we address this? Because we're, we're in serious trouble. You talk about the homeless and the affordable housing. You have seniors that used to get some of these housing programs. There are no housing programs for seniors. They're living on a really fixed income. And so you look at that, we're in, we're in serious trouble. We can't afford to continue down the path that we're going. That's me.
Thank you. So, oh, sorry, Dale, go ahead.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Dale Bries, and I'm Vice Chair of the COC and as lived experience. And 36 years in the community as a disabled individual, living on disability, part-time work. And, you know, one of the things that I see is the communication thread, you know, that's always, you know, sort of scattered for the attention to the nonprofits to be able to represent. You know, the COC last year went through some wonderful work groups and actually worked with Eastern Washington University to actually hopefully get a website up to help coordinate the information to the nonprofit world and to the homeless. And that has fallen down. And I really recommend that because that would help even coming up to understanding if we had something like that in place, to how is the new bridge shelter going to play into this winter and when it opens November 1? And just really getting the real-time critical information out to the disabled, to the homeless, and letting them sort of work and ascertain how their strengths can come up and read. Because homelessness isn't only eight to five, you know. People can look at websites in the evening and really be stronger. And I think that would be stronger as a community with that, something like that, a communication tool. And then another piece is that, you know, I've been around a while, been with, you know, I work Volunteers of America with initial PSH program and building that out. And we need to update our FMR. And I know Pam's here. And, and actually moving that now, real-time with HUD, because our rents have gone up. Let's, can we do that so we can honor that rent reasonableness and that, you know, rapid rehousing program? We could pay up to standard and move on that right now. I know there's a cost associated to that. We've discussed at the COC level. But if we could come up with that, whatever, 20K to move that forward, to get that reassessment of our community's rent standards now, I think we would really move it, you know, quicker along to help get money out the door. So, and that's, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. And Pam, go ahead.
So just quickly, it's actually a little more complicated than just coming up with the money. Because you have to have a certain number of responses, and I don't think we could get them. But, but we actually have a path to increase FMR as a different route. And so we're working on that.
Okay. I'm going to cut it off there. And I'm just going to add a few things. And then I'd like to hear from Marlene because Marlene is our former Communications Director for the city. She has institutional knowledge. She has a great way of communicating and understanding issues. Before I do though, I just want to say, it seems to me, what I've been hearing is communication, or lack of communication seems to be at the heart of what we're experiencing here. I'm also hearing that we have an issue with not enough staff, which we know, and the possibility of perhaps project employees or coordinating with the county to help get some of that money flowing and not miss opportunities that we appear to be missing right now. It, to me, there's a, the leadership has to come from the top. So we rely on the mayor's office to provide that level of not just communication, but telling people what they need to do in order for the whole system to work well. So that is at the, at the crux of, of what we're dealing with here. And Marlene, I would love to hear from you. You've heard everybody's concerns. You've heard from council. Can you give us some things that we could take away and perhaps work on so that we can start moving forward with this issue?
Yes. Thanks, Lori. So this obviously is a major concern of the mayor and, and the city administrator and the entire administration. We've, we've developed a strike team, if you will, that includes myself and Eric Fincher, IT Director, and Chris Becker, who runs our Developer Services Center, to try to provide some additional leadership and get going on these questions that you're asking. Hiring clearly is a priority for this group. And thanks to the work of Kirsten Davis and the other staff members in the CHHS Department, those things are moving forward. We're working very closely with Civil Service and HR. They have prioritized this area because of the need here. I believe there are interviews happening today for program manager positions. And we are working on filling those leadership roles, which is really critical to move everything forward. I'm going to share with you just a quick slide, if I might. This one. To come on. So we call this our spaghetti slide. But you can really see the complexity, which I think this group really has highlighted for us today. Obviously, there are numerous citizen-level boards, the CHHS Board, the Continuum of Care Board. There's also the Regional Governance Group. Those are all out here. And there's, they have a lot of needs for information and are guiding policy along with the city administration and the city council, of course. Here's where our CHHS Department falls in. You can see the vacancies. We have seven out of our 22 staff members in this area, the positions that are vacant. So we are staffed at about 68%. What we're trying to do is streamline the communication so that everybody gets communicated in the same way, probably at the same time, rather than having all of these lines of communication. We really think we need to streamline that to make sure everybody's getting the same information at the same time. Clearly, this team is in transition. And we're trying to provide them with the support they need to continue to do the work while we're filling positions. We also have to recognize that filling the positions doesn't mean we have the same output from the new person as we do from people who may have left, at least not initially. So that's another challenge that we're trying to work our way through. We feel like the, the work that needs to be done falls in these four areas: operational, training and team building, policy and planning, which we think, you know, might have to push off a little bit so we can get some of these real basic things happening. And then clearly, that communication, as we've heard today, is foundational for everything that we need to do. Here's some of the things that we think are in, that we know are in this area, but we know there are more. And more things that I've taken notes on today, that this group has brought up to us. You know, it's both sides of the CHHS house. It's the homelessness side and the housing side, both of which are two of the mayor's top priorities. She's very concerned about getting these things moving forward for the same reasons that we've heard from, from you today. So here's, here's the things we're, we're trying to gather up and get going on. We're also looking at support from the Finance Division to help with the grants management and those other really tactical type things that have to happen to get the money out and working in the community. So what I, I'm going to stop sharing now because I think, I mean, you, you get the point. You all know this. How do I, oh, there. Where's the button? So this is what we're trying to get our arms around. What I can tell you is the staff has been exceptional, and they are continuing to move work through the system, which is, which we are very grateful for. We also want to give them the support they need for the reasons that, that you've outlined, that we just really need to get the pressure off of them so they can do the good work that they are capable of doing. So, so that's what we're looking at. I don't have all the answers today. Kirsten might have a couple of the details if you wanted to ask about certain. Kirsten, did you have a couple of things that you wanted to add related to specific questions council and the Board members and staff members have had?
Sure. Hi, I'm Kirsten Davis, the Acting Deputy Director for NHHS. And just to follow up, I know there are some kind of specific things. And, and yes, we are full speed ahead on, on hiring positions. It is just as, for everyone out there, it's a challenging market. And then you add the Civil Service process on top of that. And while project employees can be an excellent alternative to that, that comes with its own process as well. And then the competitive market, and you can't offer benefits and things like that with a project position, that adds into the situation too. So it's, it's highly frustrating, and, and we can appreciate that absolutely. Just please know that we are doing everything we can, given the, the, the things we have around us, and figuring out, you know, what, what things we can be creative with. And, and again, Civil Service and HR and, and our department have been super just creative. And can we do this? And can we do that? And how can we, we get, you know, this work being done? I do feel like we're, we're on the, we're on the cusp of getting those positions filled here in the next, you know, having people in seats in the next couple of weeks, because we have been spending a lot of time doing it. But we are not there yet. The home, the home program has come up, you know, before and, and, you know, one of the disadvantages I have as this interim or acting role is that I don't have the, the knowledge to really, you know, I have to go off of what staff are telling me and support them in that way. They are all highly capable and, and know what needs to get done. And so the decision to have that be a request for information versus a request for proposal was made, given the information and the expertise that they have. And my understanding is that it is not as though we are leaving money on the table. It is that we are in a position to bring that information in and then access it in an RFP manner first thing in the spring. And so I, and I absolutely understand the urgency, especially around housing. I, my, my other world is tied into the planning side of it. And I spend a fair amount of time on the communication side for the Housing Action Plan. So I fully grasp that. And, you know, just like with any crisis, I think we're, we're forced to make decisions based on the, the information and the resources that we have at the time. And I really wanted that to be staff-led as much as possible because they are the ones that, that do perform the work and, and take their guidance on that. So, so that decision, you know, I know it wasn't ideal, but it, it felt like it was the appropriate decision to make at the time. The other, there, there are so many things coming at us simultaneously. We also have the application for the Continuum of Care annual, you know, funding process, which is very time-consuming and impacts staff in different ways. As Marlene mentioned, we are reaching out to every other department to help us in all of those different ways, whether it's IT help, whether it's additional clerk help, whether it is communications team helping to read narrative and edit narrative for applications. That is happening. It's the grants team helping that side of the house. So we are doing everything we possibly can. And, and I know that's, that's, you know, and we all want to know how we're going to move forward, right? Because this is a hard place to be. And so I appreciate that everybody's here. All of these questions that have been asked are, are things that we think about on a daily basis. And I hear you when I, I hear you about communication. And as a communications professional, that's really hard for me to, to feel like that's the position that I'm not filling in a way that is being efficient and useful, not just maybe within the walls of City Hall, but also within our community. So we have some plans around that, that we actually talked about yesterday in terms of doing a weekly update. of doing a weekly update with things that are being worked on, that we can deploy to keep everybody informed. And also, to remind staff of all the good work they're doing. I think if you went through the list of the things that they're accomplishing every day, it is astounding. And, you know, there's rough days and there's days that are frustrating. And at the same time, there's days when we find out that we are being awarded funds to fight youth homelessness. And I instantly reached out to that team that I knew helped to build that application to say, okay, all hands on deck. How do we do this as a community, given, you know, where we are with the city? We have people coming on board, but they aren't on board yet. One thing that's nice about this opportunity is that this first part of it is very planning-oriented. And so, and it's, this particular grant comes with an enormous amount of technical assistance that isn't normal for HUD grants. And it's also extremely, it requires a significant amount of youth involvement. And so, we're in a really good place. And Cecily has been instrumental in that, along with other people in the community. So, that's something that has been a really good energy boost. And while, yes, it's gonna be hard work, it's gonna be good hard work. And we have the people in place to move that forward. I feel fortunate that I, we have to be creative, but I didn't, but I don't think anyone felt like we have to pass this up. And so, that's, I think that answers some of your questions. If there's additional questions that I can answer, I'm happy to.
I think that there's going to be, and I'll get to you in a minute, Mr. Perkins. I think there are gonna be, Marlene was writing down questions. And I think that there are gonna be, as we're moving through the process, there are going to continue to be questions, Kirsten. But let's go to Mr. Perkins. Two minutes, if you don't mind, Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear. Number one, on communication, I hear you loud and clear. That's not acceptable. And my commitment is that will be corrected immediately. So, that's number one. Secondarily, hiring is a priority for the mayor. And I'm gonna run through briefly some staffing hiring issues. But I also want to point out, hiring is not unique to Spokane. It's not unique to the state of Washington. It is across the country. And when you look at different positions, including city managers, cities are having trouble hiring city managers. They're having trouble hiring planning directors and other forms and levels of staff. I mean, when you have the county sheriff offering $15,000 bonuses to hire deputy sheriffs, it's very difficult to compete in that arena if you're not gonna put forward some kind of effort there. But I wanted to be really specific on some of the things we're doing with CHHS. And I'm gonna look down and apologize, but I wanna read off of my list. I get a report weekly from HR where we are specifically to CHHS, because every day I'm having a conversation with the strike team that Marlene mentioned, as well as the mayor and the chief of staff here in the mayor's office. So, number one, program specialist. Interviews have been completed and the offer has been extended and we're awaiting the response. Program Manager One has been filled. Program Manager Two, second interviews with final candidates are scheduled, I think for this week, because this is my last Friday report. So, that would be probably the week of the 20th, which is the week we're in now. Program Professional interviews are temporarily scheduled for September 28, 29, which I believe are next week. Director of CHHS recruitment closed on September 13. And the subject matter expert team is currently reviewing those applications. As it relates to the CHH senior manager, we're gonna open that recruitment after a CHHS director is selected, so that person, he or she, can be involved in that process. And then, finally, as it relates to the NHH director, we're still working through some of the strategies, the job announcement, and what we would do in terms of recruitment for that position. So, I just want to give that brief summary in a little bit more detail of where we are in addressing the staff issues currently. Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you. And I did miss, I know, Marlene, you had your hand up and I apologize, I did not see it. Did you have something you wanted to add?
Lori, can I make a quick comment before I have to jump off?
Sure.
Sorry, I've got, we've got a board meeting at New Main to get to. But I, you know, I just want to say, I know this is something that, it can be delicate. But having worked in the State Department, having been at the time, the NDS Division Director, that department is an incredibly brutal place to work. It has been understaffed for a very long time. And these retention problems all stem from those challenges. And I've talked to a lot of folks who have left. They were all staff that I worked with while I was the department and the division director. And I think if there's a vested interest in retaining quality staff, the city has got to consider the way that it's enforced that team, the way that it pays that team, and the staffing level that it finds acceptable. And I don't mean to be harsh, but it is, it feels personal to me in some ways, having been there and knowing how much those staff struggled. And it's personal to me in my current work, because I desperately need that team to be healthy and in place so that we can be successful in the community and actually impacting those goals. So, I know we've heard for a long time that this is a priority of the administration. I'll be honest, it hasn't felt that way. And I think that team just really needs a better level of support and pay. And then, to some extent, protection. You know, there's a lot of community opinions on this topic. It is very hot. And that team has not always been well insulated and supported internally. And that was hard for me. I know it's been hard for others. So, I just, you know, it's a bit of my soapbox. But I feel like if we're in the process of hiring and taking this seriously, you know, the boards, the partners, none of that has changed. Those, you know, the State Department Board, the COC Board, the community partners, those are not new. And that communication flow is not new. But I think there needs to be some really focused effort and attention on making sure that that team is supported and funded and intact so the rest of us can be successful as well. And I know the team there is working hard, it's not a day gone current staff. I know everybody at City Hall is doing the best they can. But I think it's been a long time since that team's been fully supported and staffed. And it's certainly, we're seeing the toll of that now. So, I apologize for dropping that, having to take off in just a minute, but...
No, thank you. And you're entitled to a soapbox. I want to go to Councilmember Calfcart.
Yeah, actually, I had a question for Dawn, real quickly, if possible. You used the word brutal in terms of that role. And you kind of elaborated a little bit. But I'm wondering, is it really just because of being short-staffed or are there some other specific issues? I had some other folks tell me that they're, the way they put it was that there are cultural issues that date back a couple of administrations. And I'm just kinda curious, is there any kind of elaboration you could expand upon just to, maybe is there something the city could do to really kind of fix that cultural piece within that department?
You know, I'm thinking, and this is me speaking as a person, I have Catholic shared, just to be, I don't, just to be clear. But, you know, I think it's, it is a very hot topic. You know, the issues that department is faced with managing are not simple. We're talking about homelessness and affordable housing, and that inevitably leads into conversations about criminality and public safety. And that team is often put in the position of having to be the public face of really hard decisions. So, you know, I've stood in meetings and been very publicly booed while working for City Hall, and nobody came to support the department in those situations. And that's not a one-time event. And I know it's happened to our very most frontline staff. So, if the director is experiencing that, or the division director is experiencing that, it's one thing. But when you've got frontline staff who are being personally, you know, booed, or named in newspaper articles, or pointed out by other organizations as part of the problem, and you're, quite frankly, overworked and underpaid, it's incredibly difficult to sustain that for a long period of time. And I think part of it, too, Michael, is that those are insanely technical positions. I think for a long time, people have thought of homelessness as a, you know, a dime a dozen, anybody could work on these topics. And I think we all agree at this point, hopefully, that it is incredibly technical work. Those funding regulations, the policy regulations, the impact of the Affordable Housing and Planning Departments, you know, policy changes. It is an incredibly technical space to work in with very strict funding regulations and a lot of public scrutiny. And I don't believe, honestly, that the administrations I have seen have adequately supported a team with that much expectation while also being so understaffed and unpaid. And I think that plays a huge role in it. And I think it's very difficult on that team, because they know those things are true. And we've had these conversations before. We've done investigations before. It's also a tough spot to be when there is, you know, very two conflicted sides of those topics. It is a very polarized subject, as you all know. And so, when we're putting staff in the midst of that, and then they're working 60, 70-hour weeks, and, not to belabor it, but also, those staff have very limited power at the end of the day, right? I mean, all of those decisions are ultimately funneled through boards and administrations who are taking the final vote. And the messengers are underpaid, overworked, and the recipient has the criticism in a lot of cases. And so, I think it's hard to retain really good people, because they get other opportunities and understandably take them. And so, I think, in my opinion, it would be great if this administration or the city council could spend some really serious time thinking about what a fully staffed department looks like, what realistic pay looks like for those positions, and then what it means to actually support them, both publicly and internally, when the fire is on. Because it's, sorry, my dog is wanting my bagel that's on the table. But I think it's just a, there's a lot of pieces to that, Michael. And I'm happy to talk more offline with you, too, but...
Yes, I appreciate that.
It's a really tough spot to be, and I don't think it's been given enough credit.
I think Dawn is a wealth of information. And she and I have had multiple conversations while she was working here. So, I would urge councilmembers, if you need more information or others, to reach out to her. And when she has the time, she can talk to you, because I think she's spot on. We have reached the end of our hour. I would ask that we schedule a follow-up meeting when we have time. And I know Hannah Lee is the keeper of the study session schedule. So, in a month or five or six weeks, when we can reschedule this, I'd like to have us all come back and see what progress has been made or progress that has not been made, frankly, and then move forward with some other solutions. I so appreciate you all coming here and giving us your opinion and being frank, being honest, without the vitriol that many of us on council experience. And I appreciate that. Council President, did you want to have any follow-up? Are you, are you good? He's good. Okay. If it's agreeable with everybody, let's schedule something in five, six weeks. Come back and see where we're at, so that we continue to move this ball forward. And I thank you all for your time. Appreciate it. We are gonna have an ARPA update. If you'd care to stay on and listen to that, you're welcome, of course. And it's gonna be led by Council President.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for coming for this really important conversation. On ARPA, we only have a couple of councilmembers here, so, three of us. But I just wanted to create space. We filed a resolution for consideration, I believe it's on Monday. And it's a superseding resolution of the first one we did on process. And it basically incorporates some documents that we've shared with you previously at study session and got a little bit of feedback from, but not too much. One of the things that we made explicit in the current documents is that if a council member has a proposal, the default is that the work group is going to present it to the full council unless there's an eligibility issue. So, we, I put that in explicitly. The other piece that got added since you last saw it was the work group proposed as an initial proposal, but subject to any potential amendments. Some minimum spending amounts by category. So, you haven't seen that, because we did that at our last meeting before we filed it. So, but other than that, it's pretty much what you've seen previously. But I just wanted to create some space, we try to create space at each study session for ARP. So, just wanted to open it up to the two of you, I guess, of any questions or concerns that you have.
Councilmember Calfcart, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, since Johnny's still on the call, I'm just wondering, what, has this been kind of producing collaboration with the administration? I know the two sides have been meeting, kind of with these different work group discussions. And just kinda curious how this all came together and where everybody's at.
Thank you, Councilmember. Appreciate the opportunity. So, we have been working collaboratively, definitely. We have some concerns as it relates to the percentages in terms of it's 65% of the 100%. So, just kinda want to understand that 35%, there's no identification and kind of how we are designating a minimum of 20%. And then, just another comment up in the whereas to, again, to extenuate that partnership to make sure that it addresses that the city council and the mayor intend to exercise, you know, the oversight and the guiding principles. So, those would be our only additions. We are planning to raise those with the work group this week. But other than that, the efforts to collaborate and continue to move forward, very confident in that outcome.
And just to address the percentages, so, we just, we said minimum percentages, so that's not the maximum. That's why it's only 65%, because we wanted to create space as time goes on to change that, rather than prejudge the whole thing. So, it's just a minimum of 65% allocated. The other thing about those percentages is that some proposals are gonna meet the criteria for different ones. So, it might be both a reach-out criteria and a resiliency one. So, it's just that. And, yeah, every document that's referenced, we shared multiple times with the administration for their feedback along the way. We meet every other Friday with the administration on things. And the process has plenty of touches for the administration in it as well. But it's been good.
But I just add, we do have, Council President, Councilmember Calfcart, we do have a number of questions regarding the appendices. I know those aren't part of this discussion, I don't believe. But Appendix Two and Three, we have made some suggested revisions. And so, again, that further conversation, I think, is very important in terms of what the documents ultimately are presented when they're in their final form.
Councilmember Mom, welcome. Go ahead, Councilmember Calfcart.
Yeah, and I was just gonna ask, too, related to the appendices, just under numbered, Appendix Two, Section B, it says, "The ARPA Project Coordinator will select the proposals from the database." So, are they, are they under any sort of a specific guideline as to, you know, a couple proposals that meet this percentage and a couple proposals that meet this percentage? Just kinda curious on that. And then, the other part, is there, is there anything in here? And I've looked through, I haven't seen it, that talks about whether we're gonna, I guess, plan to spend the entire, I guess, 84? Or is this really more about the first, the chunk, the 42? And then, we'll be talking about the other 42 at a later date?
Oh, so, I'm gonna address your first question first. So, I'll have to look at that language again. So, the ARPA Project Coordinator is not picking the projects that are going forward. The council members on the work group are picking them. But she is then developing a mini-brief, kind of a one-pager about them. So, she's not making the selections that come from the big basket and that come to council. That's, council members are doing that on the work group. So, I'll look at that language and make sure that somehow I just lost some words there or something like that. So, just to be clear, that's council, the three council members. And we're developing our process for how to divvy up that work and try to figure things. And again, anything that an individual council member wants to be considered will be subject to eligibility. And the same for the administration. So, if the administration has a particular thing that they really want, we'll make sure that that gets forward. So, we're not screening things out.
Councilmember Mom is looking, I know she's anxious to say something. I don't mean to interrupt you, Council President, but she's thumping us a bit. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's just a bit of a delay, and I don't want to interrupt you, Bree. And I keep thinking you're done. Are you done?
I'm not. Tell me the, oh, the second question you had was, are we trying to allocate... all the $80 million at any one time? So, we're, we're not trying to, and we're not not trying to. So, we're, it's going to be a rolling consideration. We meet every week, and once we get this process nailed down with full council approval, then hopefully you'll start to see proposals every week, a handful. We're not going to wait and do all of them at one time, but if you recall, when it comes to the full council, the full council will indicate whether they want to move ahead kind of expeditiously on something, or put it in the parking lot so that it can be prioritized, because there's certain things that people are going to be like, "Yeah, that's, that sounds good, but I kind of want to see what else is coming too before I decide that that's there." So, but there's some things that I imagine people will go, "Yeah, we're definitely doing that." So, there's those two options, and then, of course, there's a third option, which is, "Tell us more information, we're not clear." And then there's a fourth option of, "Yeah, we don't, we really don't want to do that." So, but it'll, but it will be on a rolling basis. Obviously, we only have access to the first $40 million right now until next May, and then the next $40 million comes. And now, Councilmember Mum.
I just wanted to clarify that the three council members are not picking projects, these are, these would be sent to the full council, and the full council will be making the decision. There's no behind-the-back-door decisions, or, you know, pet projects or anything like that, there's a complete transparency in the process. It's just a matter of functionality for us to do some research and present, and just sort of put the first ones in the queue. Also, on the minimums, I was going to mention, Johnny, I saw your notes a couple of times, and I, if the language isn't clear, if you, I think it is, but if it's not, we can make it more clear. Those were the floors of the percentage, and the other 35% would be part of the discussion that we would have in collaboration with the community and the mayor in terms of the maximum amount. I hope that clears that part up for you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I've been kind of following along, excuse me, as you all have unfolded this, and I've been asking questions as I go, and meeting with you, Councilmember Mum, pretty regularly, and talking with Council President and certainly Betsy, so I don't have any questions. Is there anything else, or do we have any, go ahead, Councilmember Mum.
Well, I just wanted to mention that I really heard the administration loud and clear that they would like some clarity on which of the potential ARPA funds might be used for the replenishment, because we have had losses, and so, a team of us is going to make a recommendation to the overall ARPA group of what we could potentially identify in 2021 to make the city whole, and I think if we can help identify those and have some council support on what they think is the appropriate amount and to what pots that would go into, that would be very helpful when we are doing our budgeting process, and for the planning for the departments especially. So, we understand that's a concern. I did hear fairly directly that that was a fear, and we don't want fear, we understand certainty is better. So, if we could bring that forward early on to the rest of the council through some of this framework, and again, the document that has been presented is more of an operational document, there's another document that Lisa's putting together that I think meets the questions that Johnny, I think you had put in, is we need a simpler document, you know, for the public to understand we agree, and one has been drafted, and we're working on that, and as soon as it's fine-tuned, we'll send it over. So, there's sort of an internal operating document and then a public-facing document.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, did you have something else? Okay. And Mr. Calfcart, anything else? Okay. And I have nothing else. Council President? Oh, my goodness. We're going to finish early, I want credit for that. So, great. Well, thanks, everybody, for participating, and we are going to, Councilmember Mum, you weren't on the last hour, but we are going to try and congregate this group again in November, probably the early part of November, that's the first available study session, so we can see how far we've come, what we still need to do, and where we, where we have some gaps. So, and I could fill you in later on what the conversation is.
Oh, I sure, I was able to deserve while I was some other work for Association of Washington City. I underscore what Dawn says, I've been here eight years, I appreciate her frankness and honesty, and her experience is very helpful to the city to make it grow forward. I also would really suggest, Johnny, that Steve McDonald, unfortunately, it looks like he wasn't on the call, is that correct?
That is correct to you. He's, we've got him running on a couple of other areas, but we will ensure all future discussions, he will be a participant.
So, if we could maybe recommend he watch that hour, I think he could get up to speed very quickly, since, isn't he going to be supervising that department?
No.
On the side, that's not under his, oh, my mistake. He was part of that.
No, no.
Okay. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Okay. I am going to adjourn this meeting, if there's no objection from the other three council members, and I wish you all a great weekend, and we're going to meet again on Monday at, I think, 1:15 is our highest committee meeting, and then briefing, and then our legislative session, and both of those will be chaired by Councilmember Protem Mum. So, thank you all for attending, and have a great weekend.